Okay, next we've got future traffic signals on West Ponderosa Avenue. General Joseph, do we, Dave, will you be?
Yes.
Cheering this one through?
I'll take that one. If I can get my mouse cord long enough here. Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Per the request of the Council at your last meeting, this item provides a status update on the new traffic signals to be installed on West Ponderosa Drive, at Earl Joseph Drive, and at Camino Tierra Santa. The Springville land development projects are required to design and install two new traffic signals on West Ponderosa, one at Earl Joseph Drive and the other at Camino Tierra Santa, those intersections shown in the circles on the map. The conditions of approval for the land development projects require the developers to assess if traffic volumes have reached levels warranting the installation of the traffic signals at the time when a majority of the new housing units have been occupied. When traffic signal warrants are met, the developers are then required to prepare construction plans and hire contractor, all at their cost, to install the traffic signals. Approximately two and a half years ago, well before a majority of the new Springville housing units had been occupied, staff coordinated with the developers to verify that based on the then-existing traffic volumes on Ponderosa Drive and the projected traffic volumes that would be generated from the housing units planned for construction, the two new traffic signals would be warranted in the near future. At that point in time, the developers agreed to accelerate the process of initiating design of the traffic signals before a majority of the new housing units had been occupied, with the goal of having the signals installed earlier than required by the conditions of approval. The current status is the plans for construction of the signals have been completed and approved by the city, and the developers have hired a contractor, Taft Electric Company, to install the signals. The first order of work is to determine the exact location of the signal poles, which requires excavating within the sidewalk areas on all corners of both intersections, to make sure the pole foundations do not interfere with any underground utility conduits. Taft is expected to complete this initial work by early October. Then with the exact pole locations known, the length of the mast arms, which hold all the signal equipment, the lights, will be verified, and then Taft can order the poles and mast arms, which are custom fabricated to the site's specific dimensions. Fabrication and delivery of the poles and mast arms can take up to 24 weeks. During that time, the electrical service connections for powering the signals will be completed in coordination with Southern California Edison, and when the poles and mast arms are delivered, the signal installations will be completed and activated, which is estimated at this time to occur in February or March of next year. That is barring any unforeseen delays due to weather or with the pole manufacturing and delivery. Staff continues to collaborate with the developers and Taft to expedite the signal installation process where possible, including the issuance of required encroachment permits for the work, and assisting with verification of the signal pole locations. All parties involved are committed to expedite the completion of the signals by any means possible. That completes the status report, and I'm available for any questions.
Dave, I'll start this out. I know there will be other comments, but I've had a lot of inquiries about this. Is there anything that we can do, like for some traffic calming techniques or something that might be available in the meantime until we get to the allotted time where these will go in?
For traffic calming, I mean, it was typically is physical construction of different things out on the roadway, roadway network are not planned for this.
I did, most of the comments that I get, I'm interrupting you, but most of the comments that I get are speeding, so that's what most of them that I get.
Right, so most effective to address speeding is enforcement, and also, we have the ability through the police department for the placement of the speed radar feedback trailer that's positioned around town. So in conversation with Commander Murray, that is something that will be planned for this location. It's on a rotating basis, there's a request for that trailer to be stationed at different locations throughout town, and this will be one of those locations that we can continue to have on the rotation.
Is there any, like, potential striping that we might be able to do, or is that somewhat problematic in itself?
Yeah, again, that's more of a permanent change in the configuration of the road out there that you see in a traffic calming approach on other streets, which isn't, again, it's not, it's not planned, and, you know, eventually going forward, the signals will be there and will assist with the, you know, assisting the normal flow of traffic on the, it's a major arterial road.
I just want to make sure, so all the city permitting has already been accomplished, so we're just waiting on basically the fabrication of the poles for the traffic lights there for the most part. So everything that we've done in the city has pretty much been done, other than a few somewhat, you know, I don't want to call them minor details, but most of the stuff that we've done has already been accomplished as far as that goes.
Right, yeah, most of it, actually, I will say, so Taft was hired, and then their next step, like I said, is to excavate out there on all the corners to verify there's, they don't want to start drilling a hole in the ground when there's, we know there's existing underground utilities there. We've issued one permit for them to start doing that, which requires a traffic control plan that's reviewed by us, so one location has been permitted. We're in the middle of permitting the other location for that work, so there is some follow-up. It's somewhat, you know, it is a step that needs to happen for us to issue those permits to make sure the traffic control is correct when the construction happens, so there is a few more steps to go through, but that's an area that I'm saying we're expediting that process as much as possible.
As far as we know, the poles have been ordered, or will be certainly, you know, not too distant future.
Right, in the not-too-distant future, that's what I was saying. The first critical step is identify where that pole's going to sit, so we know how long the mast arm needs to be, so then that order can be placed. The signal poles are, signal poles and mast arms are a manufacturing system in itself, and they're very unique in particular to, especially, a full intersection design needs the specific dimensions for that location to be placed with the order, so manufacturing will not start until that is, that order is placed. And then that takes up, it can take up to six months for the manufacturing and delivery of those poles.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Tremblay?
Well, I appreciate this item being on the agenda so we could talk about it. If there's any consistent feedback I get on any specific city issue right now, it's on this, so I appreciate the item being on. Dave, could you talk a little bit about what interim traffic control measures, you know, I understand the process and I understand the timing. We still have about another six months realistically before this is implemented, but has staff considered any interim control measures? For example, placement of temporary stop signs, placement of a temporary signal or signals? Could you talk about that a little bit and what staff has considered?
Right, and yeah, those have been considered. I'll approach, take each one of them at a time. Installation of stop signs could be an interim measure to cause all directions to stop at all times, and that's what happens with stop signs, and it's not recommended.
Why?
Largely based on the volume of traffic, especially at the peak hours, every single car would have to stop at those stop signs, whereas a signal is set up to efficiently assign right-of-way for safe travel through the intersections in all directions and move a large volume of traffic even at peak periods safely.
Is the concern on that is the efficiency of processing the traffic or a higher accident rate, or both?
I would say both.
Or either?
The higher accident rate's, you know, hard to, you know, quantitatively describe, but the other problem with stop signs is they, that's the type of road that you would not expect a stop sign when you're traveling that type of road, that size of a road and at those posted speeds, the speed limit out there. So that's also problematic for just general perception of a driver would not be expecting a stop sign there, and would then lead towards likelihood of higher accident rate as opposed to a signal. It's time for traffic signals is the solution.
Is there a, is there any possibility of having a temporary or temporary traffic signal or signals?
Yeah, that is a possibility. One of the arrangements could be there, and again, it would take excavating and determining where you could put temporary poles, and typically they're wooden poles, those are also, happen to be special order. We've talked to Taft about this, and they could do that, and essentially place wooden poles with overhead wires, and that would, you know, one of the complications there is there wouldn't be the detection in the road as there is with the fully signalized, so it would be on a timer basis, which can be customized relatively closely to meet the demand and operate efficiently, but not always. So for instance, the timer would have green on Ponderosa for X amount of minutes or seconds, and the side streets would always have to wait a certain amount of time, whereas on a fully operational, signalized intersection with detection, the side street comes up, if there's no traffic on Ponderosa, it'll change relatively quickly to serve that side street. So again, operational efficiency wouldn't be there as opposed to the full permanent signals, and also, it's going to take, you know, if we started today, it would take at least two months to get those operational. The Edison power service supply still is in the process and still needs to be finalized and installed, which the timing for the full permanent signals is enough that that'll occur during these next months while we're waiting for the poles to be delivered. And then also, the cost element of that temporary signal would likely be about $40,000 per intersection.
I think the thing that concerns me the most is just the speeding that goes on there, and the real concern from folks about the potential for serious accidents along there. And my additional concern is, if I've learned anything about the manufacturing process over the years, and that is that it can slide from a timeline standpoint, and we, the process has been sliding, you know, we've had a slide back now in the dates. So really, to me, let me go back to the temporary signal issue. As an interim control measure, would, understanding the timing that's done and the fact that you don't have the fully programmed signals, would that lead to an increase in potential accidents doing the temporary? Would there be a concern from an accident standpoint that the temporary signals could lead to unintended consequences?
It could, it could, and I would say one element of that being that with a permanent signal installation, the lights are right where they're supposed to be, and the number of signal indications, we call them, the number of red lights or green lights facing the oncoming traffic are designed to be in a certain spot. It'll be a challenge to get those right where they need to be on a temporary signal installation basis, so it won't operate as efficiently, or in my opinion, as safely as the permanent signal installation.
So, last question then, from a timing standpoint, if the council were to say, you know, we really want you to undertake that, that as an interim control measure, it would take 60 days roughly, just to bid it out?
Correct.
And 60 days to, well then, would it be then 90 days to when it would finally be working?
It's really hard to put any more definite timeframe to that.
I know, I'm trying to pin you down.
And it's not something that we do at all, ever, really. I mean, I really have no experience or sample, you know, to compare it to as far as what would typically be expected. One of the driving factors there that's still an unknown is when that Edison power service, what it is, it's a separate meter pedestal service that's constructed for the power to go to the signal. All that's been designed, and it's in Edison for final design and for their, for their work to be done on it in coordination with Taft as a portion of that work also, but that all still has to get final approval from Edison. So, you know, ideally, a temporary signal could get started and get put into place, and the Edison's service pedestal will be there within 60 to 90 days. You know, it's, that's a real rough estimate.
So, for example, that could happen within a potential 60-day bid period with an additional 30 days for installation. You, in other words, within the 60-day bid period, that pedestal
Might.
Could be, could be accomplished. Yeah, I know, it might be accomplished.
Okay. Ms. Craven?
Well, I, there have been a lot of questions about different things. I just want to get in that I think that two four-way stops in such a short distance as Earl Joseph and Tierra Santa would create an absolutely horrible mess out there with traffic. I think that needs to be considered when people talk about stop signs.
And that'd be a portion of our decision to not recommend any stop signs on Ponderosa.
The primary complaint is speeding, but stop signs and traffic signals don't really address speeding, correct?
Correct.
They're to assign right-of-way, so I don't know if, if, you know, spending the money and causing more congestion and causing people to speed between the stop signs is really a solution. I wanted to go over, I know that there's a feeling from people, I've heard, that we haven't been fast enough doing this, so I kind of wanted, we don't just put in traffic signals willy-nilly, right? We have, there are warrants, and we actually, the developers who were, who needed to put the traffic signals in, we actually did their analysis sooner, based on an amount of occupancy. And when they did their analysis, they had, it found what?
So that, an initial analysis about two and a half years ago was that the existing traffic on Ponderosa, at the through traffic at Tierra Santa, and then especially the left turn, Ponderosa to Earl Joseph, met the volume criteria that's established in the California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, met that threshold of volume for that warrant that would warrant a signal.
And that, so that it met one warrant?
Correct.
And there are nine for traffic signals?
Right, nine possible, right. And then, and then looking ahead towards the future of what the projected additional volume of traffic would be coming out of the development, and that was where the city really, in working with the developer on, say, look, we know these homes are coming, they were, the entitlements were in place, they were in plan check for, almost the entire development was coming forward, so knowing we were going to get there eventually, and they agreed to accelerate that and get started on the design.
I just, I just wanted to talk that through a little bit more slowly, because I want people to understand that this was foreseen, and the city did act on it. I also, I was going to ask about the traffic signals as well. I'm a fan of roundabouts, and we've talked about this, but you can't do a roundabout, right, in a place where you've already defined the streets, because it needs a larger area, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
So when we have new intersections to design, I'll be on top of that. Sorry, I'll have. Yeah, I think that's it, thanks.
Ms. Moshe?
Just a few questions, Dave. So a prospective and or ideal location has already been determined for the poles, based on city's due diligence, I presume?
In general, not exactly. What happens in the signal design is, we've got the layout of the street, we know where the curbs are, we know where the median is, we know where the cars are going to stop, and the design lays out the location of those poles approximately. And then with every traffic signal, what happens is, we call it potholing, you go out and in that general location, they'll open up a foot square, two-foot square opening in the sidewalk, and dig down very gently, because we know there's conduits down there, there's, all the utilities are out there in the street somewhere, and then they're right-of-way. And a lot of the dry utilities tend to be, your power, phone, and cable TV tend to be outside of the pavement and within the sidewalk area, so those are, you know, critical, they don't want to hit those. As much forward planning is done as possible at the onset of the installation of those, but exact field conditions when those utilities go in, sometimes they've got to add an elbow here or do a sweep here to get to their pole box, and it ends up, you know, not the best-laid plans, this utility ends up here, so Taft needs to dig those up. If actually you drive it now, you'll see what we call the underground service alert markings, so they've already called that in, all the utilities have gone out and marked on the ground, and they're within two feet plus or minus typically of where the utilities are, and then Taft will now verify that and dig down, that's what I was mentioning, our staff, city traffic staff, will end up going out there with Taft and confirm this is where that pole should go. The foundations can be three feet in diameter, a large steel cage with concrete in the foundation, so it takes up a significant amount of room, they just need to make sure it's not going to hit and affect any of the other existing utilities.
But assuming that, so that ideal location has, within a two-foot square, has been identified, if we know it's going to go right, or we would like it to go ideally right here, but because of some sort of conduits or existing utilities, we might have to move it, ideally, we're not moving it more than, say, a foot, maybe?
Ideally, but my experience on traffic signals, probably 50/50, we end up moving one four feet over here. One time in Moore Park, we found a catch basin and a storm drain that was in a location that, they had to special design a real flat, shallow footing that was four feet over, and that totally changed the design for the pole and the mast arm. So those are the kinds of things that, it needs that field verification step.
Well, we've already designed the poles, so we have kind of a base design based on these ideal locations.
Correct.
So once Taft does their digging, identifies the utilities, whatever, if there's some sort of relocation, or then we, all we're doing at that point is tweaking the design, so we have little, what I'm looking at for is, we have very little time between Taft identifying those utilities and us being able to tweak the design and then go, send it out to, for construction.
Right, right, yeah. Taft actually places the order.
Okay.
They're the ones that are, it's on them, it's their contract, and so all these per the plan, and, right, and typically, it's just a minor relocation that won't affect the validity of the approved plans.
Right, okay.
Tremblay?
Another alternative, I guess, to, in lieu of these interim measures, would be increased law enforcement, increased enforcement efforts and increased signage efforts in that corridor. Can you comment on what, if anything has been discussed relative to that, and what the current level of enforcement efforts are in that corridor, or maybe Commander Murray can help us with that, too?
Yeah, as far as current efforts of enforcement, I defer to the commander, and, but you're right, that would be, to address the speeding is enforcement, and I mentioned the speed radar trailer is effective when it's placed.
It's a mobile trailer.
It's a mobile trailer, and actually effectiveness is higher when it's there sometimes and not, you know, when it's not to be expected. The permanent installations have a diminishing return on effectiveness.
But in addition, in addition to, if I may, in addition to that trailer, I mean, there are, do we have other trailers or other mobile devices that could be placed in both directions?
Not, not speed radar feedback signs like that.
Okay.
So currently on Ponderosa, we have had recent success with enforcement for speeders. I don't believe we've had a sign board out there anytime recently. It's on the rotation list. We have currently two of those sign boards, and we rotate them throughout the city, depending on the need and the demand. We have been the recipient of some grant funds based on a VTC grant that the Sheriff's Office applied for and was awarded. Those monies are going to come to fruition the first week of October. I'm hoping to have at least one, possibly two, sign board trailers by the end of October.
Nice.
So our current plan is to get a sign board out there now, continue with regular enforcement, and hopefully through that education, get people to slow down, so those that are pulling out, going east in particular, that's where the unsafe turning movement comes into play, because they can't balance and gauge how fast the oncoming traffic is. So that in the short run is sort of the plan moving forward.
If you had that, where would you put that trailer? That extra trailer with the grant funds?
So, you know, before people start, I would probably do it, you know, I'd have to take a look, we haven't really taken a hard look, but it might be even west of Camino Tierra Santa for that eastbound traffic. Let me see where, oh, there we are, up there, never mind. Yeah, so we might put one up there, or we go on the other side of Earl Joseph, catching the westbound traffic. So I'm not exactly sure where we would put it on Ponderosa specifically, but giving people enough of an opportunity to recognize before they get up to speed and go too fast before they hit that curve to hit the freeway, because what we're finding, too, is people's speeds as they are going westbound to catch the freeway seem to be ramping up in that area.
Commander, you mentioned, I think you used the term "regular enforcement." Is there the potential for some increased enforcement efforts over the next six months, over and above what you would typically have out there in terms of either traffic detail or other cars?
No, there certainly is, but I have to say with a caveat, it's all dependent on the workload, depending on what's going on in the city that day, how many crashes we have, investigations that are ongoing, but certainly, it's an area we can pay a lot closer attention to, to really kind of hammer home that that area is becoming more and more unsafe, and to condition drivers to drive slower.
I, I guess, well, I don't have any more questions. I do have some comments.
Okay, Ms. Moshe, head.
Yeah, one more question, or it might be a two-parter, and this might be for both Dave and Joe, but what have we, have we instituted anything moving forward to where we can mitigate this kind of situation or issue again, to where we can attach certain conditions with very specific timetables to future potential developments and/or anything?
That is already a part of the process, and there are specific timetables attached to these projects that require the developer to start looking at if warrants are met, based on volumes of traffic, as the projects become occupied. And that is the standardized approach that, you know, especially sometimes, you really want to make sure that it's the appropriate thing to install a signal. There's projects that have been conditioned to install a signal that it, as it unfolds and the patterns of traffic, which are analyzed and estimated going into it, don't materialize and never meet the warrants for a signal, which is not recommended to install, stop signs or signals if they're not warranted, to address the situation that they're designed for. So, in short answer is, our standard conditioning process, when a project comes forward, is to include the requirement for traffic signals when they're warranted, and that's typically based on either 85% or even full occupancy, it depends on the phasing of the project and the type of project, but to start that analysis at that point. And a signal does not automatically go in on day one when they're starting rough grading on the project.
Right. Approximately, when did we hit that threshold for signals warranted on, for this road here?
So, well, as far as the threshold for them, based on the condition, to perform the warrant analysis, basically do a traffic engineering study on existing traffic, and again, that's, it varies depending on the condition, or the developments out there. Some are based on 85% occupancy of a project, some are based on full occupancy of a phase. Some of the projects were known to be phased going into it, as you saw out there, kind of in the middle where we call calm stock developed, they built phases at a time and completed those out before they started on another phase. So they would have been conditioned to perform their engineering study at the time of one of those phases was occupied, and that, you know, is maybe six months ago, a year ago at the, at the earliest, probably, it's just a real rough estimate without having the dates of all the certificates of occupancies in front of us.
I'm just curious as to how we can shorten that span between the threshold being met or being warranted, and the 18 months or maybe even two years from warrant to, okay, now we have a signal, because it's a big, I have the same issue and complaint with the freeway, it seems, you know, we don't widen the freeway till like 10 years after it's warranted, because we, most people don't, and I'm not saying us, but, you know, we don't start, ever start the process of, you know, widening something or making improvements until exactly when it's warranted, and then it starts to process, then we, this long, dragged-out process with all the due diligence and everything else. But I'm just wondering if there's a way to shorten that window, if that, if there's certain discretion, if the city has particular discretion, particularly on that timetable, as to when, what point of build-out?
You know, we could require it earlier, but the requirement is the way it is, because it's likely, based on experience, that the warrant's not going to be met until you reach that threshold of occupancy of a new project. So it's futile to do an engineering study earlier to fully, and again, we want to make sure that the installation of either stop signs or signals is based on an engineering study that's been performed, that shows that the installation of a signal will achieve its intended purpose, and if it's not, there's, it's not a good situation to have a signal or And, and if it's not, there's, it's not a good situation to have a signal or a stop sign in a location that's not warranted and is not serving its intended purpose. It can actually cause worse consequences.
Right.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it, thanks.
Ms. Graveney, did you?
Yeah, we're talking here as if all this traffic came from that housing development or all of those housing developments in this project called Springville. And that's, that's not the case. The vast majority of this traffic is traffic that didn't exist, but does, before Springville interchange came in. And I think that our model didn't show anywhere near as much traffic. A lot of that traffic's coming from Lewis Road, coming from CME, coming from Moore Park, people who are going to Oxnard, maybe the military base, and they're coming down Las Poses, turning onto and going on. So this developer isn't responsible for that traffic. This developer is responsible for putting in the signals based on warrants and the projection was that his, he needed to do it because he was putting in a housing development, but he didn't, if, I would maintain that if we had connected Earl Joseph to, and remember before all this started, there was a fence there and you couldn't even go down Earl Joseph. If you came out of that housing tract and wanted to go down Earl Joseph, you had to make a U-turn and come back to Ponderosa, turn left and go down. So all of this traffic, once we opened up Earl Joseph so that Ponderosa could come through, it did exactly what it was supposed to do, which was relieve traffic from the Las Poses interchange, which was, what, a D or an F? I think it was at an F level.
It was an F.
It was an F level, but it, it has trained, taken all that traffic and put it over there. And, and I don't think we realized how much additional traffic would be coming from Eastern Camarillo and from the Somas area from 118. And so, you know, we, we, I believe that the conditions were, were put on the developer as they would be on any normal developer to, when, at the eighty percent level and the developer is moving forward and doing it earlier and I think that's about all we can expect.
Okay, this is informational only. We do have a study session to get into also. Now, we